Regular meeting of Minnehaha County Planning Commission to order. I will begin with a few introductory comments for this meeting. Any final action tonight on conditional use permit requests will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, May 1st at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, May 16th at or after 9:00 AM in this same room. Any final action taken on rezoning requests tonight will be referred to the county commission for a public hearing on Tuesday, May 30th at 9:15. The meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. Are there any objections to the Planning Commission members on any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, I will next read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to an item or would like to discuss any item on the consent agenda, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to ask questions or submit comments to the Planning Commission later in the meeting. Okay, the consent agenda includes the approval of the minutes from the March 27th meeting, 2017. Item number two is a conditional use permit 1715 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 2,500 square feet. Petitioners Jamie Bowen, location is 45705 252nd Street, approximately six miles north of Humboldt. Item number three, conditional use permit 1716 to allow two single-family dwellings on, and this is located, this is Peggy Keller, approximately two and a half miles northeast of Crooks. Item number four, conditional use permit 1717 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 2,200 square feet. This is Corey Herding, is at 7715 East Maple Street, approximately one and a half miles west of Brandon. Item number five, conditional use permit 1720 to allow bed and breakfast. This is Mike and Jana Miles, which is at 45816 Highway 38, approximately a half a mile east of Humboldt. Item number six, conditional use permit number 1721 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 2688. This is Steve Roth in Misty Truman, is at 25397 465th Avenue, approximately five miles north of Hartford. Item number seven, conditional use permit 1722 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 2,700. This is Chris Stewart, it's at 48352 257th Street, approximately three miles southwest of Garrettson. Item number eight, conditional use permit number 1723 to exceed 2,300, 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 2,400. Peggy Keller is the petitioner, it's approximately two miles northeast of Crooks. Item number nine, 1724 to allow temporary retail sales of fireworks. This is Andy Jorgensen, property owner is Samuel Assam, and this is the northwest corner lot of Highway 42 and 481st Avenue, approximately one mile east of Sioux Falls.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on that. Why isn't that in our joint city?
Because it's on the, it's on the east side of the river and that's outside of the jurisdiction.
Okay, thanks.
All right. That concludes the consent agenda. I saw no objections during the reading of the items, so we'll call for action.
Move approval.
You have a motion for approval?
Oh, the consent agenda, second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The consent agenda carries. Now, two things. First, if you have got a sign that you've paid $50 deposit on, please bring that back to receive your $50 deposit back, and then you are free to go at this time if your item has been approved. And then we will start with item number 10. Kevin Hookman will be presenting, item number 10.
Good evening, it's Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Here before you is a conditional use permit application number 1718 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building, and the request is for 13,440 square feet.
Okay, I can see why you might have put this one on the regular agenda.
And so the property is located approximately four and a half miles north of Sioux Falls along Highway 115, South Dakota Highway 115, near the, what's known as the Peterson subdivision along the highway. In subdivisions of residential lots that exceed four in number of lots, accessory buildings greater than 1,200 square feet need a conditional use approval, for approval to build. The petitioner is requesting 13,440 square feet of accessory space, as he would like to construct one building that is 60 feet by 184 square feet. He has one building that is already existing on the property, which is 2,000 square feet. In the past, the, this property has had two conditional use permits. The 2,000 square foot building was approved in 2005, in which he was actually approved for 2,400 square feet, but only constructed 2,000 square feet at the time. Then in 2014, a major home occupation was approved to allow a truck body restoration in the 2,000 square foot accessory building. If approved, this building would not be allowed to be used as part of his home occupation as that already is required to only have 2,000 square feet. Planning staff has several concerns with the proposed accessory building, and the commission should consider these concerns if the application is to be approved. Note that the, the large building, let's see, if I got a site plan here. Well, the site plan isn't coming up very well. The large building is 11,040 square feet, and this size of building, for example, would even require a conditional use permit in a commercial zoning district. There are many buildings in the area that do have larger accessory buildings, and that map gets pretty small, and one building located, or one property right here, does have approximately 20,600 square feet of accessory building on a 90 acre parcel, which is also part of a larger farm. The residential buildings in the area are all smaller with the larger, the largest one in the area existing at 4,560 square feet. Next concern is that the, the Minnehaha County Building Inspector generally requires engineering stamped drawings for buildings that are wider than 50, 50 feet wide. And this structure is proposed to be 60 feet wide, and to his standards, should be engineered if they, if it is approved. Third, the subject property is currently two parcels. You can't see that in this map, but you can see the white line right in the middle there. And this has happened in the past where a petitioner will have two neighboring parcels, and generally what we, we require them to combine the two parcels into one before the building is constructed, as you cannot have an accessory building without a primary use. For any conditional use permit, there are criteria that should be examined, five criteria, six criteria, excuse me. First, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted in the property, and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. This will be the largest residential use structure in the area. The accessory structure will not be used for commercial uses if it was approved, and the home occupation, as explained, would not be able to, be allowed to expand into The requirement for personal storage only would be required as part of the permit if approved. Second, the effect upon normal and orderly development and the improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses prominent in the area. If the structure is approved, this could set a precedent for future accessory buildings in the neighborhood. The area is well-developed with access, with residential acreages, and the proposed site accessory building has, or the proposed property has a building eligibility on, as well, so he could put a house on it through a conditional use permit process. The surrounding agricultural land will likely remain agriculture whether this is approved or not because the building eligibility has been moved. Number three, the utilities, road access, and other necessary facilities are provided. If the, the attaining and extending utilities would be required to be done by the petitioner, and access is, would be done by the road, the existing driveway. Number four, the off-street parking loading requirements are met. This use would not require any additional parking, and note that no commercial businesses, parking would be allowed at any time. And number five, the measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. As with any conditional use, no offensive use, nuisances shall be permitted at any time if the structure was approved. And number six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. The proposed accessory building is a size of a structure more typically found in commercial or industrial locations. The property is a small acreage in a subdivision of dozens of other residential acreages. A residential use at this scale may appear to be commercial in nature despite the residential use. The building may also lead as a precedent for the future large buildings in the neighborhood. Staff finds the proposed accessory building exceeds typical size of accessory buildings in the area, and staff recommends denial of conditional use permit 1718. And I'll go over some pictures here, and some of the site photos. Looking down the driveway, is a driveway from the front yard leading to the back garage existing, and you can see trees on the, the south side there. A little closer up, you can see the parking area and trees around the property. This is the general area where the structure would be placed. It's flat and fairly low ground. Another picture of the area, you can see the trees on the side. This is looking from approximately the front of the garage, the existing garage, to the nearest neighbors to the south of the property. This, the, on the site plan, if you look at the aerial photography, it does appear that there's a driveway here, but it looks like that has been removed, and that's what's left of the driveway that used to go to the neighboring property. And then this is the Peterson farm that is currently an active farm that has the large accessory buildings existing on the property. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, so that, that farm you've got a picture over there, that's the one on a 90 acre plot?
Yes, yep.
And so that was basically a farming operation for 100 years or something?
Yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Kevin? Not, will the, will the petitioner come forward? Thank you, Kevin.
State your name and address, please. Tim McClish, 25543 475th Avenue. I'm supposed to?
Do you have any questions? Or obviously the staff is recommending denial, why should we not deny this?
Well, I guess what I was kind of hoping is maybe if, obviously that's a very large building, maybe you could tell me a smaller size that would be more appropriate for the situation, or that would, you know, I mean, I totally understand if you don't want to build a 180-foot building, I get it, but maybe if you could tell me a smaller size, something like that.
Staff, is there any?
Typically, you would go, you would allow what would be the largest in the area, and I think if you look at that map, it's 4,500 or something.
Okay.
4,560.
That would be total.
That would be total.
So you had your 2,000, to that you got 2,500 potentially. No guarantees.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I don't really have a whole lot to say.
Question for the petitioner, was, if anybody else has any questions?
Mr. Chairman? So, are you going to run a business out of this building?
No, and the, the last conditional use permit I got for business, I never even started a business. I was just getting that approval in case when I bought the house, if I ever wanted to, but I never did, so.
So this is a
There's no business.
Pretty large building, are you, are you going to, is it going to grow stuff in there? Or?
Um, for storage mostly, but eventually I would maybe, I don't even know if I would have to get another permit, but ride horses in there for training, or, you know, for barrel racing and everything.
So you have horses?
Not yet, but, I mean, that's one of my goals, I guess you'd call it, or whatever, but.
A quick question, staff, okay, he has a conditional use permit for a home, it was truck rebuy.
Yeah, it's on the other half of my property.
How long does that stay, as long as he owns it?
Well, if it hasn't, actually, if the use hasn't occurred within a year, it's supposed to be invalid.
Okay.
I have no desire to do that, so.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone in the audience care to address this? Or you have anything else you'd like to state, sir?
No, that's, that's good.
Okay, then we'll ask for other comment from the audience. Seeing none. Any questions, discussion, motions?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's too big of a building. I mean, it's a third the size of a football field or something, I think, and so I think perhaps you could work with staff to come up with an alternative, so I'm going to make a motion to deny at this point.
Okay, motion to deny, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny, any further discussion?
If you deny it, he'll have to come back and reapply and pay the fee. So I just will throw that out there that, if you
Defer?
You could continue it for a month, and he could come back with a more reasonable request.
I'd like to adjust my motion to that, Mr. Chairman.
Do you withdraw your first?
I'll withdraw my first motion and make a motion to defer action for one month, one month.
That'll save him 250 dollars.
That's what I was going to say, that's, that's all right. But you'd spend a building permit eventually.
I'm often giving hard time about raking in the money, but see, I'm trying to overcome.
Spent 300 bucks with him this year, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
A second.
A second, okay. All those in favor delaying this for 30 days, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries, so this will be delayed for 30 days, you can come back with another proposal.
I could just make a note.
Be a more appropriate proposal.
Kind of what we just talked about.
Work with staff.
You can work with staff on that.
Did you have something else?
Now, we're to what?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to add on that, too, it'd be nice to have a better feel for what the intended use is as well when you come back. So, if that's a month, or whatever that ends up taking, I think that would help, I guess, from my perspective.
Yeah, and it's all hidden by trees, the trees are 40 feet tall, and
Thank you. All right. Item 11, Scott.
Item 11, what is a rezoning request. Tonight's the hear, hearing that's been published for rezoning request 1701 to rezone approximately 80 acres from A1 agriculture to the Eagle Ridge Plan Development District. This was, is for a property that is about a mile or so south of Wall Lake, and the extension of 41st Street where it meets the Wall Lake Oil, commonly called. I met with the applicant and applicants, and Eric Willitson this morning, and they are asking this be deferred for one month to the, the May 22nd meeting. They are going to revise their plan and bring us a different plan, so.
That's my motion.
Thanks.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we will defer this, the motion has been made, a second to defer for 30 until the next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, that will be deferred for 30 days.
It will be deferred to the May 22nd meeting. The next item is also a rezoning request. This is for, just to check something quick here. This is a rezoning request 1702 to rezone approximately three and a half acres from A1 Agriculture District to the RR Rural Residential District. The property is located approximately two and a half miles north of Sioux Falls at property, that is approximately a half mile east of the intersection of the Jim Zweep Memorial Highway and the Renner Road on 258th, so it's about a mile and a half east of, of Renner. The applicant is rezoning three and a half acres to rural residential out of a 20 acre parcel that he owns and lives on. The intent of that is to subdivide that three and a half acre parcel into three residential lots, and he has provided a general site plan showing the proposed three lots. On April 11th of 2017, not March of 2008, I did conduct a staff visit to the site, and there is an existing residence which is buffered by a very nice shelter belt, and that's located south of the proposed area to be rezoned. There is a rural subdivision of approximately 55 lots that is located generally to the north of this property. And then also in addition, you have Andy's Acres, which is approximately a mile and a half south of, of the proposed rezoning, and that contains about 40 lots, more or less. Those, those are zoned A1 agriculture and are, were grandfathered in when we adopted the zoning ordinance. The Minnehaha County's Comprehensive Plan, the 2035, Envision 2035 Plan, has identified this as a future growth area, and this future growth area is called a transition area, and this property is located within that transition area. But I would indicate that the concept behind a transition area is to promote cooperative efforts with cities in dealing with development issues along their fringes. Ideally, I think the, the plan indicates that growth should occur when municipal infrastructure can be, be provided, infrastructure in the way of water and sewer. At this point, Sioux Falls has not identified this as an area that ever, not to be serviced in the, in the near future. The property is also not located within the Renner Sanitary Sewer District, lies outside the boundaries. The applicant has indicated they have a desire to rezone approximately three and a half acres to allow for those three additional houses to be constructed along 258th Street. And I'll show you their general plan there. This certainly may set a precedent which would encourage many other properties in the area to start requesting rezoning and create many new residential lots. The applicant has an additional 16 acres, which could also then, at a later date, be rezoned and subdivided. The rezoning proposal does not meet the policies and the objectives of the Envision 2035 Comprehensive Plan. It ignores density zoning as the best means for residential development. Action 4.2 of the Comprehensive Plan states that new growth and development should be focused within municipalities and areas adjacent to municipalities where infrastructure will be available. And as I indicated, this is not within that area where infrastructure by the city or municipality is available. Certainly, I have concerns that this may represent spot zoning. This rezoning of a lone three and a half acre parcel to, from a larger area could be considered as a spot zoning. The closest rural residential area is located approximately a mile and a half south within that Andy's Acres subdivision. For those reasons mentioned, and is not consistent with the intent of the Envision 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and it appears to constitute spot zoning, staff is recommending denial of the rezoning request to rezone three and a half acres from A1 Agriculture District to rural residential. And I'll show you a couple of slides of the proposed site. So this is the proposed parcel, and I think if you go back and look at this, you'll see that there is, you, you'll see the three and a half, the applicant's house is right here, the three and a half acres that are, that are proposed to be rezoned are up here, but then that also would leave additional property here that could be, I suppose, someday rezoned if, if they so desired. This shows the very nice buffered, single-family residence that's located on that parcel. This is their garage along the driveway. This is the subject property. It is located on a hillside that slopes to the north. This is from their driveway looking to the west. This is looking to the, across the road to the east. This is part of the property. There's their rezoning sign nicely posted. This, once again, shows the area to be rezoned, and it's along that hillside. This is looking basically west, I'm on the, oh, sorry, yeah, west, I'm on the east side of the property looking directly west. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Scott?
Yes. Scott, so, are the other properties, this, the applicant owns contiguous with this property, and do they have any eligibilities?
Well, there, there is one eligibility, it's used by the existing house.
Okay.
And the 20 acres is all one parcel right now.
Okay, and the Andy's Acres and the other acreage to the northwest there, those are both grandfathered in, isn't?
Yeah, there's some, there's some areas of Andy's Acres that are zoned rural residential, but then there are some that are just zoned ag. And then the property to the north, I'm trying to think what that subdivision is called, it, McCroskey's tracks, and that is zoned, that's zoned ag.
And if I may, are any of them connected to the Renner Sanitary District?
No. They're on Minnehaha Community Water, and they have their own septic systems.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for Scott?
I did receive one other thing, and I, I put a letter in front of you, and I did give one to the applicant. At 4:30 this afternoon, I received a, a letter from an adjacent property owner or a neighbor, a neighbor, and I passed that out for your review, and I also gave one to the applicant.
All right, thank you. Petitioner is here, please come forward, state your name and address.
Robert Corey and my wife, Angie Dolan, and I neglected to get her put on this whole thing to start with when I got going with it. If you look at that picture there, those three properties, there's a wonderful shelter belt to the north of our, our place, towards 258th Street. The land up there is level, and then it slopes off to, to the highway. With, over an acre, you could put septic tank systems, systems in, in there. We would come up that driveway, just to the north of the shelter belt, we'd cut off our driveway and put a road all the way in on our side, so there'd still only be one entry on to 258th Street. Now, the balance wrapping around belongs to the city.
I believe you have to stay at the microphone, sir, so you can be recorded. We can't understand what's there, we have it down.
And we can actually see it right in front of you, there's a, a monitor.
We have a large screen TV right underneath your desk here that we're looking at.
In front of us, there's a TV up here that we can see.
Oh, okay. Our property goes to the right of where the trees are, and then to the left, down about 100, 100 yards or better.
There is an even seat.
Right. The rest of that wraps around to the east and to the south, it's hilly property, and it joins Slip Up Creek. The city bought that when they thought they might have to dam up Slip The city bought that when they got thought they might have to dam up Slip Up Creek before they dug some new wells. And so, we have animals, we have two blind, three horses that would be fostered or adopted. Two, two of them are blind that nobody else would take, were starved to death. There's no way that we could develop the rest of that pasture of the fifteen acres. Now, I'm eighty-four, my wife is seventy. We, since, well, before we retired, we did a lot of update on the house. We have a beautiful home out there. We'd like to stay there till we pass on and give it to our daughter and son and three grandsons. But when you have to pay seven, over seven thousand dollars taxes to the city, it has to come out somewhere other than social security and teacher's pension. So we have to draw it out of savings accounts. Those savings only last for so many, so long. So it would be a real boon to us if we can develop those three lots. My realtor and neighbor, Philip Eggers, he's, he sold the ones up at Cedar Ridge that you people approved, or a whole bunch of them, which is on a busy cliff avenue north where fifty-eighth street is not busy. But he sold for sixty thousand dollars a, a lot. You figure our lot is worth more than that. So I'm just asking you to, to give us some of that. And the lawyer who sent the letter this afternoon, and he says in there, he's got nothing, we only got a long good, he's three houses down to the west of us. There's six houses across the road, three of them been built in the last two years. One, two, three, four of them have. And going west, his place is a third one, and there's another one and two more. So it's not like it's a, it's just strictly ag out there. But it's potential and it, you know, just read in the paper this last week that housing is hard to find in Sioux Falls. People are wanting to build out in acreages. But we have three beautiful lots we could sell.
You do understand how the county works relative to eligibilities?
Yeah, to some extent.
So this is, to us, that's like gifting you three eligibilities. That's what, it's also about density zoning, it's also about you're not affiliated with the sanitary sewer district, and this is not a planned development. They're very, I mean, we've been pretty consistent on what we approve and do not approve for these types of things. So otherwise, like I say, I can think of, I have thirty acres, okay, if we do that for you, then I think I should get like three or four of those lots too. That's the way it would go, it's just a snowball effect, it's precedence. Any other questions for the petitioners?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corey.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience care to address this? Okay, seeing none? And please come forward, state your name and address.
Phil Eggers, two five seven four eight four hundred and seventy-six avenue. I guess my, my family owns the land directly across from there and I rent basically all the farmland and cattle around there.
To the north?
To the north. My question is, is why, uh, how is this different from Cedar Ridge, just for my knowledge?
I would have staff address this, this voted, this body actually voted against Cedar Ridge.
Okay.
It was the county commission that approved that.
Okay.
Do you want me to give you an explanation?
Yes.
Um, I, as the chairman indicated, uh, Cedar Ridge was a planned development. And they had eighty acres, they proposed eighteen lots, and I think there was a wider concept there where they had, um, an equestrian center and they had open space and trails. And they had a, a, a plan, a, a, a uniformed plan that they provided or that they presented to the planning commission and the county commission. And, um, it was, uh, where there was already a lot of development occurring, there was a mobile home park, if you recall, or manufactured home park that was directly adjacent to that as well. So, uh, and as the planning commission indicated, they did not support the request. The county commission did rezone it and overturned their recommendation. But I think it's a, it was, there's a difference there because there was an overall concept that was provided, an overall plan where you had residential and you had another use, and this is strictly just a residential use.
Understood. And I guess that's where the idea came from, is that there's probably between that, the Sormhite second edition, there were probably thirty-five lots approved within the last three or four years.
Well, the Sormhite, that's within the Renner sanitary sewer district.
Correct.
So there, it's a little, it's a little different there.
Okay.
And that's what we would call a, uh, rural service area or a, it's also not transition area where Renner.
The key to that was the sanitary sewer district.
Understood, that's just where I needed clarification, thank you.
Well, could I ask you, Mr. Eggers, uh?
Yes.
So do you have any eligibilities on your property?
We do.
Okay, uh, that's, I guess, my question. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else in the audience? Not, we close the floor, call for action or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do think it is representing a spot zoning and, uh, it's not, you know, that other acreage, certainly I can understand the comparison being drawn, but, uh, you know, that equestrian center, et cetera, is in a sense a bit of an ag thing. And, uh, it's also, um, uh, that road is, is, is growing quickly. It's, it's difficult for me to see a way to approve this at this point. Let my fellows opine.
Any other comments, discussions? I understand where Mr. Corey's coming from, as I turned sixty-six this year and I'm looking at over five thousand dollars in taxes every year. I understand what you're talking about. And that you have to start playing, okay, how long can I afford to live here? I understand all that, but this isn't, doesn't have anything to do with that unfortunately. This has strictly to do with density zoning and appropriate land use.
I may.
You have, you have eligibilities, that's the way it works. Okay, maybe you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay, motion to deny, is there a second?
I'll second it.
You have a second, uh, any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of denial signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Motion to deny is carried. We have old business, correct?
Well, I think we have on the agenda to discuss the KFO ordinance update. And, I mean, we've discussed this, so I think if, if you're comfortable, um, we are, I think, I, I think we are at the point where we should set the hearing date. If you review this, we can start having, um, the process of a hearing date. So if that would, if that's what you would like, I would ask that you direct staff to publish a hearing date at whatever meeting you'd like. And if you feel that we should have other meetings, like neighborhood meetings or more like, um, you know, meeting in, in Hartford.
Around the areas, sure, like you've done with other things.
It's, it's, I think we're ready to move on to the next step.
Did you do anything regarding to, uh, existing producers?
If, if you look at it, it was decided to maintain the existing wording for that and alter a little bit.
You what, just maintain the existing wording?
Uh, yeah, maybe, maybe existing wording, but to, uh, let's see, page three in that packet. But to add some, some characters that were there, the, may have a six hundred fifty, but sat back from years residence. And then this is up from a property line, I need to add a zoning permit requirement so we, uh, we'll know when these things come up. And so, uh, yes, we, then we know that it came up in two thousand seventeen instead of, well, it was there sometime around then.
Okay, that was one of my concerns, that we do protect existing producers.
But then we maintain it as, uh, the nineteen ninety-eight.
I'm sorry, where is that, on page three?
So, page three is the concentrated animal picking operation class D. Uh, the nineteen ninety-eight that I mentioned comes in, it's a play of the definite, he starts turning the door on that. There defines what a existing vehicle is. Hang it up on my, maybe a lot.
That'd be all right, thank you. So, is it under like item four?
So it'd be under, let's see, I'm in the ordinance, I'm not in my packet.
Okay, J, item J.
So under item I is the exi, concentrated, oh wait, excuse me, you're right, J. Sorry, uh, so there's, there were less changes under J, uh, being that the, uh, clarifies number three, clarifies number five and number six, and then adds, uh, that number seven there as a replacement before it was, it had a different wording.
So class D is up to a thousand?
So class D is up to two hundred and fifty animal units.
Oh, and then just existing facilities then under J can go up to a thousand?
Yep.
Okay.
So what's our feelings relative to scheduling the hearing? Let's say they've done a lot of the work.
Yeah, you guys have done a nice job.
Well, Kevin and David have done most of the research and, and put it together and you've helped as well. And we've gotten direction from a couple of our planning commissioners. I mean, I think we can, we'll, when we schedule the hearing, we'll have a, another full presentation that we'll make for the, any of the audiences here, and that'll also refresh your memory on where we're going with this. And like all hearings, you can continue it as long as you want. I mean, you can continue it another month if you need to or, but if we do want to make changes, we have to have the, uh, an official hearing published and that's the start of the process.
So how many meetings do we have to go through? Two?
We just go through one.
Just the one?
And then it would go to the county commission and they have a hearing based on your recommendation.
And to be honest, I think the county commission is, uh, just trusting us to do all this stuff and they have, uh, uh, they don't have much crap on their boots.
Well, and it's, it's a major revision.
They don't want you.
It is a major revision, so we're looking at.
We need to educate them is what I'm saying, I guess, and, uh, one way or the other.
Scott, my basic concern, is there any way existing operations? If they can be like certified, so down the road if they want to do something, opposition could say, well, they don't have that number there. I think it would be great if we could have it certified for existing operators, so that's already down. So when the date is put in print, it's there, it's on record. So, and later down, if they want to expand, people can't say, well, they weren't at that level.
It, it, I guess from, from what my research was, is that it's going to be difficult for us to do that for the nineteen ninety-eight date. If we want to pick a new date, uh, and do something like what was done in eighty-five for drainage where they have a vested drainage, uh, that was a suggestion of another county in the area, that they have vested CAFOs or you register, you have this many animals on your property at this date and you're vested at that amount.
But I think what, what Doug is saying is that you would be vested or you'd be certified and then you could automatically expand and.
Right.
And I, I just don't know if that gives, I think that sort of takes the due process away from other people to express their, right now, we don't have a mechanism in our ordinance that would allow for that kind of, of, um, authority to be granted to.
Okay, so that is, to me though, that is the weak spot. If this says you had to be existing in operation since nineteen ninety-eight, correct? That's what you said, Kevin. To me, I, that, that's, geez Louise, those guys are old already.
Yeah.
Join the crowd, you know? I think you've got to look at, uh, that's too far. I mean, it, or they should have been in operation within the last, say, even if you say ten years, you know, whether they're putting a date there. For the ten years, I, I agree with what you originally said, Scott, about, well, some would just get a couple cows, well, we can double, we can double, we can double. And say, well, we're existing. Well, that's, you know, but how you can clarify that to where is, is difficult.
Well, we can, we can work on that some more, on, uh, on the certification or, I just, I want to try and, you know, follow the KISS method where we keep it simple.
Oh, yes.
Because if you're, if you have to go through, through some kind of vesting procedure where you're recording something at the registered deeds, it's just, it's going to be a disaster. So, I, I mean, I, if we can do it simply through putting in some kind of date in the ordinance that says if you were in existence at this time, then you have some kind of vested right.
Okay, so here's another way of looking at that, okay, let's just say, uh, I'm ninety-eight, I qualified for that. I sell my operation to another operator, it's a continuous operation, it never changes. And then the second buyer wants to do something. Well, does that mean he can't?
He can.
Cause it's always been a livestock operation. See, that would be the type of clarification.
It's the use of the property and that would, that would transfer to heirs, uh, assignees, whatever. So if you sold it, if it was your son that took over the farm, it would, it would count if you sold it. It was, as long as you didn't cease the use, it would still be effective.
That's a little better.
So we are actually blessed with having legal counsel here tonight, do you guys know Judy here?
Hi Judy. You're just in time.
We're doing the Sarah Show.
Sarah is, is, uh, headed on to bigger and better. So, do you have an opinion on the issue just discussed about, uh, protecting the legacies of existing operation? Okay, thanks. And you, you should, uh, introduce yourself to all of us here.
Better have the microphones, Kevin. Just what you wanted.
Twenty-five minutes all night.
Try to keep it to a half an hour or more.
Sure, yeah, well, you give a lawyer the mic and you're in trouble. So, um, my name's Judy Ziegler Werkempf. Um, I came on with the, um, State's Attorney's Office July first. I'm, I came on as half civil, half criminal, and then when Sarah Show left in November, then, um, I took over more civil. And then we've recently just added Maggie Gillespie, a former legislator, um, as a civil attorney also, so, thank you.
Judy handles all of our items for us.
Okay. Do we have a lot of items?
We have court a lot. She, she's handling the, um, the Brandon Water Tower appeal. And that trial's been set.
That's going to court.
Oh, by the people who didn't want it?
But.
Okay.
So she'll be working with us on that, or should be defending the county's conditionings for it for the water, Brandon Water Tower.
That should be a good time.
Yes, it should be a good time.
Scott, when I went through this today, I had a few different sporadic notes, is it all right if we just kind of?
Sure.
Zoom through page by page, you guys mind?
That's right.
I'll have to go page by page.
Expecting it to be done this early, so.
Me either. Hence the reason I'm willing to ask the question. So.
Where are you starting?
Uh, first page, memorandum.
Memorandum, okay, there we go.
So for CAFO ordinance change review, uh, I, I just want to make sure I understand, right now, we don't say that you can't be over an aquifer and that wouldn't change, or does it currently say you can't be over shallow aquifer?
Right now, it precludes, uh, CAFOs from being over what's the water source protection area. But if it's a shallow aquifer that's not part of that, then it doesn't, then it says you have to have this boring.
Okay.
Which is very little.
Lake aquifer, for example?
No, wall lake aquifer is a deep aquifer.
Okay. It has cruddy water, yes.
It is.
A, a, and the shallow aquifer is defined in the ordinance and there is a map that accompanies that. And i- if you look in how, uh, the ordinance is worded with that, uh, the map is part, it was then specifically called out as that's the map we're using.
Makes sense. I, I bring it up simply because when we get into the public meetings, I think we'll want to be ready to defend that because that can be a really hot point. If you just, if you make it sound as if, I don't care, put it wherever. I've, I've been attacked on that one a couple times and that's not at all what anybody's saying, but man, if it sounds at all like that.
Sure.
That gets ugly. Uh, next page, that was easy. The, the question on the liquid manure application allowance, are, are, are you guys planning to take that out? Allowing it, or were you actually asking the question, you want us to?
It, I, I was planning on just.
Changes too?
Uh, right at the very top, the allowance for the surface application, the liquid manure application, state does not allow it, why should we?
Uh, that was a kind of rhetorical question in the bottom that, uh, I, I guess we. Uh, that was a kind of rhetorical question in the bottom, that, uh, I, I guess we could keep it in there, because the way the ordinance read before is that you have to have a very specific reason, you have to contact the, the planning director, and explain your reason, and have to show where you're putting it, and, and all these sorts of things, and it's just like, well, even if we did allow it, the state wouldn't allow it, so. It just doesn't.
Would we enforce that, or do we enforce that now, if the state doesn't allow it?
Uh, I would guess, I haven't had anybody ask.
Haven't had anyone call in to say that my neighbor's spraying, uh.
No, they inject it normally, and.
Right.
So, they're gonna.
That hog operation that burned down north of Crooksoe used to use a irrigation pivot.
Yeah.
And it could come up some, to put some liquid out on top of an alfalfa field right after the, the cutting was taken off, that could be.
I mean, we could leave it in there, but there is a mechanism in our ordinance now for that.
To allow it, or to?
To allow it, and, and where is it?
That, that's what, what this, they're referring to, is it, it would, as of how it's proposed, that it's been removed, so.
So, this is kind of where my question came in, so, excuse me, if the state doesn't allow it, so let's say somebody goes and applies surface, like you mentioned, in alfalfa, a neighbor smells it, calls the state, says, hey, they can't be doing that, state comes out and says, hey, you can't be doing that, if we said no, that's fine, are we opening ourselves up to the state?
I think so, I think the state laws would supersede or trump our laws, or our ordinances.
Meaning, if they don't allow it under any circumstance, we probably just shouldn't either then, right? To avoid that?
Yeah.
Or, or do we maybe allow that leeway here for producer's sake, and hope it doesn't bite us? Cause usually it would be the state, well, you guys would get the call, and then usually the state would next. So, I just, I wanted to bring that up for discussion.
Would that be, uh, like, say, if the state supersedes, that we don't.
Then that means it's really not allowed anyway, if the state finds out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, would we want to even run that risk?
I would just take it out.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so, take it out.
Constrain us any more than we have to, but, if that's one where, i- if we end up allowing it, I, when the state doesn't, I think we open ourselves up to. See, many, uh, county could care less about the environment, the waters, and everything else.
Yeah, I think that's true. That's a good point, Paul.
Okay, next.
Okay, I would make one more statement on that liquid manure, who is really going to judge, no, that was not liquid, this is liquid. Fine line, cause you can pump a bit till you can't get any more out of it, but it's still in a s- little bit of a slurry, and the neighbors will, that's liquid, so we gotta be very careful on how we word it.
Well, even, yeah, I mean, you get down to the chemistry, even the solids are liquid, I mean, wood is liquid, and literally, a glass is liquid.
Glass is liquid.
Which you think is a solid, but, you know, it's really liquid.
Is it, for us to try to stay out of that debate, is it possible to put something in here that, that says it's not allowed unless approved by the state? Prior approval by the state type thing?
Could do that.
We're telling you, you can't do it, but if the state says, go ahead and do it, since they supersede us under whatever your unique circumstances.
Or laws may change.
Can we do that?
So, in the, um, if you go to the definitions, there is a definition for, uh, liquid manure, and it says that it has to be, if it can't be handled by a pump, this would be the second to last page, it's ninety percent manure, uh, is stored in liquid form.
Liquid, there it is.
Yep. With or without agitation, it can be handled by the part, pump.
Yeah, ninety percent.
Yep, so, i- it really comes down to, like you said, uh, when you can't pump it, you got it all out of the, the hole, and the pump is not working anymore, then.
If you heat it up, does it get more liquid?
People love that, boil it for a little bit first. I, I personally think anytime there's the potential conflict between the two, if we can figure out a way to allow for flexibility, but defer to the state to make the determination.
Yes.
Is our safest.
Yep.
Cause that, that way, we're not asking staff to get into the debate of, well, when's it sludge, when's it liquid, when it's not, and, and now we're opening ourselves up to staff being forced to make a determination that they're not qualified to make, and then what do we do to defend it? Then Judy comes in.
So, maybe we are.
Already taken care of that.
Should we not mention liquid manure then, and the regular?
I think we basically say, my opinion, we say it has to be incorporated, has to be injected.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, but you could make a statement of, unless.
Unless allowed by the state?
Unless prior approval is received by the state, DNR or something.
Like an emergency application due to.
Something, I mean, those things happen.
Pit in the middle, we had an excessive wetfall, and their lagoons are.
I know there's been cases, DNRs come in and, and allowed a little bit of leeway, but it's very structured, I mean, it, if it's frozen grounds, semi-frozen, maybe saturated, whatever, they say, all right, yeah, it's gotta be, only these pieces qualify, but you can do it, because otherwise you're facing a lot bigger problem, and, and then they, they do it, but then it's on record, it was decided by engineers, the appropriate folks.
Okay, let's roll, roll on.
Uh, the bottom of that same page, on the expiration of conditional uses, if I read that right, do we not have a mechanism right now where we can extend a conditional use for like, say, a year?
We can extend only a year if there's no opposition.
If there's no opposition, and often, you're gonna, most CAFOs are gonna, you're gonna get some opposition at a planning commission meeting.
Well, let me say this, that I know there was one application we approved that didn't get built, because, you know, during the long application period to get this pushed through, and it was appealed, that then their financing fell through, and so, then it never happened, it was, uh, that calf operation where they were gonna take them. Yeah, and so it didn't get built, and they still have them living in hutches, or whatever we call it, and, uh, you know, with, with our drainage stuff, which we repealed, we went from a one-year permit to a two-year permit.
Three.
I mean, would that be an awful thing, that would allow for vagaries of weather and construction, and.
Two years would, for sure.
Well, I was gonna give two examples that came to my mind, as to where I personally think that we should allow ourselves a latitude to at least consider extending one, and, I mean, opposition is almost guaranteed anymore, so, I mean, it, let's just assume we can't extend it then, so, let's say it's one year, and we allow up to a one-year extension, uh, working with one dairy in Moody County, just had to go in and get his extended, he was held up because he couldn't get the haul road agreement done, not because the township didn't want to cooperate.
Right.
But because it, it was, it was just a whole slew of just odd things that all hit at the right time, so that held him up, and then also, right now, as you're well aware, there's nobody that's dying to buy the milk, so, he's having to put it off, so this spring, he had to go in and get an extension, the biggest thing was the township, he wanted to start last fall, but without his haul road agreement, he couldn't, so, the whole winter got wasted, now, spring, March was his permit, so we went and got an extension. To me, there's a really good excuse to be willing to consider, it was nothing he did.
Depends on what kind of year it's approved.
It was circumstances, and that was approved in March.
I think we should just word it that, uh, it will expire one year unless they come.
Request a, an extension.
Bring us something to you for, for, uh, another one-year extension, so.
I think most counties limit it to you can, you can get up to one, one-year extension, and then, and then if you haven't started turning dirt, you're done.
Yeah, and we can word that that way.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, there isn't anything in. Right now, there isn't anything even in the proposal here, so we'll work on that, if that's what we want.
I personally would rather see somebody get an extension and farm that land for another year, than just go out and scratch dirt, so it sets her dormant, not doing anything, cause they had to say that they started their construction.
Well, we have that issue in so many ways, I mean, construction is not a twelve-month operation in South Dakota, and, uh, so you have a window, and then you miss the window, and for whatever reason.
Okay, that's a good point, I think we wanted to go for a two-year permit, I mean, right off the bat, and, uh.
I think once we approve it, we mean it, I mean, any changes, they'd have to come to you guys, and might have to come back anyway, right?
We can just make it a two-year permit, if for two years.
And then allow for an extension without objection at that point.
Up to one year, maybe in that case?
A two-year permit with a, a one-year extension if, uh, which could be objected to.
After two years.
So, keep the original terms, basically, but give a two-year permit upfront.
Okay, we can change it that way.
I like a two-year.
Yeah, if everybody's comfortable with that.
You can easily, well, just like you said, you can easily run it to two years.
Yeah, yeah, eighteen months is not a surprise.
All right.
Okay, uh, the next page, which isn't numbered, uh, action at the bottom, I was just gonna ask, how many meetings are we staff, so, we already covered that. Uh, nothing on one, oh, we're cruising now, two, uh, three, already asked those questions, four, nothing, I know I got more in here, five, six. On page one, under twelve point one zero, bottom of the page, on the notifications, I, I'm sure we discussed this a couple meetings ago, and I couldn't remember where we ended up, or how everybody felt, should we make a requirement of the landowner, especially in the, or the, or the developer, producer in this case, uh, in the case of a CAFO, for sure, be reaching out to the landowners? I- if you think of, say, the Water Tower deal in Brandon, when the people felt like they hadn't been talked to, I mean, in the end, they still didn't like it, but that first meeting was a whole bunch of people.
Brandon never spoke to them.
People saying they never talked to me, and if the first time they engage, I've seen this with CAFOs multiple times, if the first time they engage is at the permit hearing, it doesn't go well.
When they unload the bulldozer.
And that first meeting's gonna be a nightmare.
They unload the bulldozer, and then they peopled, it's the first time they heard about it.
I, I personally think, if, the more we can encourage.
Communication.
Interaction and communication upfront, the better our meetings go. I think you make them do the notice, personally.
They do have to do a five-hundred-foot notice already, and this is in addition to that.
You guys go out a half mile, though, right?
Yep, yep.
I think have them do the half mile.
That's not, that's still an unreasonable request.
Well, no, you could go twenty miles, or, well, anything that's.
But a half mile is not an unreasonable request.
I personally don't think so.
There could be a dozen people there, though.
Yeah.
A dozen business, if you're serious about it.
Seems like cost of doing business to me, uh, I mean, they should be reaching out to them anyway, because if, if you think about doing development, you want to be working with your neighbors, cause if you don't, life is hell, but.
Whatever you can convert in advance of the meeting is better than.
We can't do it at the meeting.
Yelling at each other at the meeting.
People are there for or against at the meeting, we all know that, and if they haven't interacted at all, I think they get even more angry if it's you guys that reach out to them, and the landowner didn't even have, or the developer didn't even have the courtesy to send them a letter, that says, hey, give me a call if you have any concerns.
We've had it before, where cousins didn't talk to each other, and they're sitting like this in the back of the room, on a drainage thing, I remember, they were, one was there, one was there, and we deferred action for two weeks, and they talked, and it was.
Yeah.
In fact, they, they were done before our meeting was done, they, they figured it out.
Those, I've seen a lot of those types of things happen, yeah.
Cause they just never talk ahead of time.
Right.
It seems everybody's life is better.
What you're suggesting is that the, the petitioners should notify property owners within a one-half mile.
I think so, whatever that.
That's, I don't find.
Whatever that distance is.
Yeah.
Personally, and by mail.
I, I think they should be ready to come in with proof of certified mail, saying they got, I, I notified them somehow or another, like what the Brandon guys did. When they came back in, I thought, now they've done everything that they could. They sat down with them, still didn't like it, but at least they sat down with them, but in some cases, it was too late, cause the heels were already dug in, so there was nothing gonna change.
I think all we can do is require them to do it by mail, I don't, I think it's a good idea to do it person.
I would use the term certified mail.
I think certified mail, personally.
That way they can say, they have receipts?
It's good for them, more than anything, be able to show their receipts.
See them before they send the letter, that's a matter of coaching.
We regularly get people complain they never got notice, uh, uh, you know, their tax requirement, or whatever.
We can add that by certified.
Uh, do we want it, then, then the return receipt then, too, and?
Well, that comes with that.
They'd want some kind of proofs that they mailed it, to me, it's easier sitting on this side of the table, if a producer comes in and shows they at least gave some effort to reach out to their neighbors and said, you know, here's my number, very least, here's my address, write me back.
Certified receipt requested, or return receipt requested.
Just, I guess, to play devil's advocate, return receipt, that's like seven dollars a mailer, just letting you know that.
I think when you're, when you're doing a confined feeding operation, that's a million dollars, what's?
Sure.
I think it's a pretty good investment, to be able to defend that, if you try it personally, if it's me.
Because you're serious.
Yeah. I think it goes a long ways, even though it seems like it shouldn't be that big a deal.
Sure.
I've seen a lot of those, that, that makes the difference.
Okay, good, next point, page two.
Uh, next page, uh, oh, I just, I just asked the question again about the located over map shallow aquifer area, depicted on the DNR thing, uh, but you guys already addressed that, I think, kind of the explanation, it's just, I was just making the note that that could be a sticking point. Uh, let's see. The waiver, the, may be reduced by fifty percent, so number two, under the land use setbacks, and the absence of waiver required setback, may be reduced by fifty percent. Do we want to say up to in there? It kind of reads to me that we're saying, if we reduce it, it's fifty percent, we can't go up a few hundred feet, or.
Okay.
Is everybody comfortable with that, or think that makes sense?
That makes sense, cause like you say, that doesn't mean we can go fifty percent, we could go five percent.
Or forty.
That allow for the innovative technologies that we may deploy, is that?
Not really anymore, uh, in part because that becomes a sticky issue on what is innovative technology, um, where trees are a universal odor reducer, is, is kind of that respect.
But what if somebody comes in and say, okay, I want to do a dairy farm, and I have all-covered lagoons, and that type.
Biofilters.
Under a domed, a domed facility that would be completely self-contained environment.
And then the problem is, is then, is that new technology, because that's been a while.
It has been a while, but it's different.
So.
The only thing I wondered there, that I just made a note on that, other than the up to, is, do we want to put that fifty percent limitation on ourselves when we have no idea case by case, cause we reduced that one of Alders or Alderson's, uh, that was, that was even more than fifty percent.
That was a little more than fifty percent, yep.
So, I was thinking of that one in the standpoint of, do we want to put the fifty percent, cause we don't know if that next young producer might come in, and we feel it's a really unique situation that seems justifiable, because of all the factors included, that's the only one that makes me wonder if, if we want to put the fifty percent on there, just, just because we don't know what might come up. Yeah, it, it's good to have something, and I don't, I don't know if it becomes more bargaining chip than anything, if, if that becomes contentious, but.
I, I guess, back to the, kind of, the, the covers and stuff, uh, Scott always says, keep it simple, uh, that's really, the other reason why it went just trees, because, you know, for a dairy farm to have, uh, covered lagoons, well, the next place is gonna have something completely different, uh, and to list out all those different things that might be allowable to reduce that setback, it's, it's.
So, you just made that out, this really is just referencing if it's trees.
Yep.
So, we can go up to fifty percent if trees are planted, you're not actually bringing in any of the other.
Nothing else.
To that, that, oh, I didn't even catch that.
Okay.
Makes sense. Thank you. The liquid manure application, next page, uh, yeah, page four, sorry, under item two, C one, two, three, four, the only thing I had questioned was if you guys were comfortable getting into the, worrying about the nitrogen and all of those things, or if it would be simpler for you if it was something that said it had to be approved by a DNR again, or.
It would be easier. Yep.
They maybe had to have to submit to you that this has been approved as a, as a reasonable rate, but, I mean, later on, I, I think you got into that more, because you defined that a little bit more about what levels there are, but.
Yeah, you're right, it wouldn't be something that we would readily be able to go and test. So, it, that's just what-
Staff needs to do it, but they're not even trained in it. Are we at, opening them and us and everybody up to that fight?
So who would do it, DNR?
A DNR or?
Or a certified crop consultant.
Certified consultant that comes in and does the testing for most people. And then it's at least somebody that's got credentials versus us saying, hey, you guys deal with it.
It'd be something like Central or somebody like that that does those things.
I think there's quite a few that can do it.
We can make that change too.
Well, and that's if everybody else is comfortable with it, I'm just spitting all kinds of stuff out.
You're doing a great job.
Oh, alright, alright.
Should there be anything put in for like injecting miles, pumping stations? You know, like-
Yep, because you, once you get a mile away, you need a pump again.
Right.
Yeah, booster pump.
So I'm just, you know, that, I think there should be something about pumping stations are allowed.
Oh, is that sometimes a problem? Oh, really? People will throw a fit that there's a pumping station that keep it going?
Really?
Temporary situation though, is it?
Temporary, but what is the application process?
Uh, pumping stations should be then part of the manure management plan uh, that says, you know, we're having manu- uh, liquid manure and we may be pumping it more than two miles, or whatever it might be.
It's gonna be done right, you gotta have it.
So how would you state that?
I never heard that before. People just see him and that's more of a nuisance.
Part of your manure management plan.
So I don't think you have to state that.
I think it's covered on the manure management.
It's an approved plan.
Yeah.
Part of that, part of that.
Leave it out.
Okay. Uh, number three, other than liquid manure application, I was just curious where the, uh, no thicker than three inches on tillable soil and one inch on frozen soil, where that comes from?
That comes from our nuisance ordinance.
So it brings up to me the same question of, should we just, for your guys' sake, let that be a DNR type thing?
You could run out there with a ruler?
That's easier to do than testing nitrogen.
Scott's actually had to go out and do that with a ruler, I think we should leave it.
Well, I, I've all but-
You can keep that ruler when you retire.
You, you know, for lawn grass, we, I, we have a stick that has a twelve-inch mark and you just pound a nail in and, and when the, the grass is taller than that twelve inches, then you're good. It's, it doesn't, doesn't have a ruler, so we could do the same thing with manure, you know?
That, it was more just question again of, is that something that-
It gives you a guideline.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was any meat behind it.
Cause actually to get a uniform that's spread out three inches, that's a lot of stuff.
That is a lot of stuff.
Yeah, but it's, you open it up and you get a pile of-
Well, yeah, you'll have one here.
Right.
And that's what they're gonna, that's what they're gonna cut, see it's-
And there's, there's my concern, is you get, you get that one neighbor that reads it, I mean, it hasn't happened, I hope, has it?
It does.
Then you just-
It's the average of the field.
Well, then you just say that's-
The average of the field.
That's just where they started, and if you look at the entire field, it's safe.
Is that when you just say, don't you have some chickens to be mad about?
Find the high spot, check it.
Okay, if you, if you guys aren't concerned, I certainly am. On the animal species and equivalents, uh, something that recently was brought up to me, which I think makes perfect sense. Uh, you know, we never had Jersey cows here really before, but now that, a lot of these big dairies are going all Jersey. And, yeah.
Where, where are you at?
Uh, on page five, sorry, in the table.
Mature dairy cattle, one point four. Some people go one point one on Jerseys, isn't it?
I heard, I heard one all treated the same as beef, but yeah, one or one one.
Aren't they all just dairy cattle?
No, no, Jerseys are a lot bigger.
Mature Jersey weighs about a thousand pounds.
They eat more, they poop more. So-
Holsteins, how much? Fourteen fifty.
So, so in some states-
Average.
Where, uh, where Jerseys have been around a long time, you know, it was always Holsteins here, so there was nothing to, but-
But that sort of scares me because, you know, uh, what about water buffaloes and you're gonna make mozzarella cheese? I mean, I don't know what sizes of water buffalo, I've never seen one.
Is that where mozzarella cheese comes from? Well, there have been some, or, you know, you get into Jersey cattle, the other thing you'll get into is on calves.
It, like, i- if you look at Minnesota's animal list, uh, it's three times as long as this because it breaks down all those things, a- and this is the list that South Dakota has and, and it doesn't- Yeah, it doesn't change our ordinance a whole lot, it just goes right to South Dakota's.
Yep, well, and I was gonna say too, uh, that was more of a note, and, uh, if we're not gonna have graduated setbacks, a large is a large anyway. So, then it doesn't really make all that big a difference, but there are some going to that, apparently. Uh, I think, that was, see how easy that was, Scott? That was all I had.
So six hands are point two animal units, basically.
So do you want to?
Let's adjust that.
You want to schedule a hearing for May or June, or what would you like to do?
How's everybody feeling?
I would say the time of year, latter part of June would be better.
Okay, we'll do it for June then. I thought about that, cause May, I, there's a good timing, you know, then crops are all in.
Yeah, you don't know what the field conditions would be like, whether-
Actually, we put enough hay.
Then hitch it in.
Okay, we'll schedule it for June.
Well, I wonder if we should, uh, work to educate my fellow commissioners, uh, before, before the hearings.
Well, don't give us time to, if we do it in June and we can do a, like, uh, we could do like a briefing memo that we're taking this to the planning commission, which is, let them know what's coming up, and then we could reach out to them and let them know, and then if they have questions, they can come to us.
I would like us to consider doing some, uh, one-on-one discussions with, uh, with, uh, our regular commissioners.
Yeah.
Okay.
However that works, I should be happy to-
Great.
We'll schedule it for June, no good time.
Yeah, it will, it will.
Alright.
So we'll, we'll see a final proposal then next.
We can, yeah, we'll put together a final proposal and then we'll go on for June. So next meeting, you'll see the final workup and then we'll go on.
Are we gonna keep you busy?
We'll try to leave the chickens out of it at least now.
Yeah, yes, we will.
We have peacocks.
The chickens will be appealed, so we'll keep you informed.
Really? Think it will be?
I'm guessing there will be.
Yeah, sure.
That'd be a good one for you to hear again, Jeff.
Yes.
I voted to deny it.
How, how many, how many mice might be out there running their grass?
I just, uh, felt like, uh, it was okay to approve it, but I didn't think unanimity was best.
Yeah, that's how I approached the water tower a couple of months ago, knew that was moving on to the commission.
It shows we seriously listen to, uh, uh, the opponents.
Yeah, cause like you said, it's unbelievable, the time we spent on that.
Well, it seemed to me like the bulk of the concerns were addressed, and, and the rest is sour grapes, clearly.
They don't like that guy.
So he has a chance, if they get out, I mean, he knows he's gonna have ten people calling your guys a shot, so either he does it right or he knows they, they gotta go.
Let's officially adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
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 Okay.
Finally, everybody was in a-